This conference will now be recorded.
So, are we doing a coin toss?
I was gonna let you guys go first, since you guys are bringing the petition, that's pretty standard.
Actually, I was gonna operate to... I would... then let's do a coin toss.
I'm a white trans, so I have to...
Oh, you don't. And sorry, and your name's Terry?
Terry.
Amy. Amy. Lot of stuff. Okay, feel like a Super Bowl referee. Amy, you wanna call it? It's heads. Somehow, I got a quarter out of the yard. Do you wanna go first?
I can't defend myself if I don't know what she's...
So you'd rather have her go first?
Absolutely.
Well, so would me.
I'm just saying.
And I won the coin toss.
Yeah, but you guys are the ones pushing for this, so you should be able to state what the issue is, and then I should be able to defend myself.
Typically, the party brings the petition first. If that's okay. All right, can everyone hear me? All right, I wish I was here to play pickleball, but I'm the association's general counsel. My name's Curtis Akmark, and I'm kind of, I guess, the moderator or the person in charge of this debate today. I will not be asking questions like you see on TV. My job is to just make sure there's a structure to this and there's an order to this. I represent the community association as a whole, so I represent the corporation. I don't represent any individuals. I take direction from the board as a whole and from management. That's the way corporate lawyers work. So again, that's my job, is to just kind of call balls and strikes and make sure this process is fair and orderly. I'm not taking a side either way. That's not my job. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna open it up. There's... we've got a representative from both sides. We'll turn it over to the side bringing the petition first. They'll have five minutes to kind of make their case. Then the person defending the petition will have five minutes to make her case. We'll go back and forth, and then we'll open it up for questions. And so there will be timing. So who's in charge of the clock here? Someone's in charge of the clock. So I do ask... great, there'll be a time right there. So I do ask both of you to stay within the time limits, so we can be cognizant of everyone's time. But thank you for all showing up today and participating in your community. Without further ado, I will turn it over.
Good morning. Everybody hear me? My name is Amy Lee, lot 1349, and I've been a resident here at Happy Trails for almost eight years. I represent a large group of Happy Trails residents who have valid concerns regarding the conduct of Roberta Ernest. If I appear a little nervous, I am. I haven't spoken to a large group in many years. We shouldn't even be here. However, our hope is that in the future, fellow board members will conduct themselves in a manner that is required by our governing documents, address concerns with each other, and hold each other accountable, and be forthcoming with all Happy Trails residents. We are here to provide facts, as we are aware of, so you can make an informed decision. We have come to this unfortunate circumstance with a recall, because on January 23rd, 2025, a letter was sent to the board respectfully asking Roberta to step down as a board member. She rejected that request, even after others encouraged her to step down. I will outline several instances relating to Ms. Ernest's disregard for the Code of Conduct. The Code of Conduct is a written document signed by each board member when they take office. The Happy Trails Court of Conduct... Something happened... oh, there we go. "The Happy Trails Court of Conduct for Board Members" includes, but is not limited to the following language, and I quote, "to guide and maintain a high standard of ethical conduct in the performance of association business and to ensure the owners maintain confidence in and respect for the entire board." Two key points include this exact text. "No board member will assume or be vested with any authority to direct a member, a member of the association, contractor, agent, or employee of the association. The authority of the board is limited exclusively to the vote upon policies of the association and participation in meetings of the board," end quote. Number two, no board member shall interfere with the duties of any Happy Trails volunteer, and this includes any volunteer on a committee or organizing an event. Each example I will outline have been directed at or witnessed by fellow residents, volunteers, including those on committees, and employees of Happy Trails, and can be confirmed by residents in the audience or by written documentation from residents sharing their stories. There also may be others that do not feel comfortable coming forward due to perceived consequences. These are some of the issues that have been brought directly to us and raised concerns of Ms. Ernest's behavior as a member of the board and documented violations of the Code of Conduct, of which I have just outlined a few items. To the Budget Committee, she has been vocal about raising our HOA dues to $350 to $500 per month. When challenged on this, bringing up a large percentage of residents who live on a fixed income and may not be able to afford that, she has responded by saying, "Well, they can move out." During the November 2024 Welcome Back Parade, two instances were documented, one of which resulted in an official complaint against Ms. Ernest due to her interference with volunteers' organization of the event, causing unnecessary problems. She interfered with the arrangements made by parade volunteers for the lineup, taking it upon herself to change the parade committee's instructions for unloading the student band and its close proximity to the horses she invited, and previously stated were parade-ready, all to suit her needs. This was done without any coordination of event volunteers. She was witnessed yelling at volunteer to stop the band from practicing as the horses were scared and acting up. This created a safety risk, and the parade volunteers had to quickly shift to mitigate these risks and move the band. In a couple documented instances at the chuck wagon, one of which led to an official complaint to management, Roberta was observed asserting her entitlement as a board member towards staff and/or volunteers of the chuck wagon, yelling and making demands for her own personal requests, to the point where these individuals were in tears and visibly upset. Interference with the Safety Committee. She exceeded her role as a board liaison to the committee and tried to push a project that the committee did not agree with. We have also received reports... Can you hear me? How about now? There we go. No?
Sorry, I think the time was up, so it's Roberta's time, and you'll get another chance.
First, I'd like to thank the anti-recall residents who have banded together in an attempt to stop the injustice placed upon this community. Since I'm not allowed to pass out flyers or have a slide presentation in my defense, I will be in the library tomorrow to present documents and answer any questions you might have. First of all, the 23-2025 request for me to resign was actually in a letter from their attorney that requested myself, Blaine Rubus, and Bill Powell to resign. Our attorney, the association's attorney, responded to them and said there would be no resignations. They sent a follow-up letter shortly after requesting the resignation of all board members, and again, the attorney responded saying there would be no resignations. I have never proposed an increase of $350 to $500 for dues. Find that in the meetings or the meeting minutes. As a budget... as a person that views the budget, I sit on the outside and may ask questions, but I'm not the one running that meeting. That is Bill Powell, and I'm sure he's here in this office, in this auditorium where he can stand to that. To say someone can move out... can't say that I've necessarily said that, can't say that I haven't. There's been a lot of conversations that have gone on in the last three years, but I would imagine, because of base of everything else I've seen, that comment was probably taken out of context. The 2024 parade that they mentioned actually took place in November, I believe, of 2023. I was part of the committee for that parade. So for me to make a suggestion on something, on how something might be handled, was because I was a committee member of the parade, not because I was a board member. I was asked to be in the committee to handle the honor guard and to secure the honor guard from the police department, and asked the police department as well as the fire department to attend our parade, our Welcome Back Parade that hadn't happened a while. The horses were given to me. I didn't seek them out. Somebody said they had horses, and the next thing I knew, the committee asked me to manage that, and I offered to help. You're right. When I was told by the owner of the horses that they were parade-ready, I made that assumption. That's wrong on me. But when the horses were next to the band and the band struck up, the horses were rearing up. And so that's a safety issue. So yes, I did yell at the band to stop playing because they couldn't hear me. That was in safety for everyone. Entitlements in the chuck wagon? I've never asserted my entitlements in any chuck wagon. I don't have entitlements. I'm a volunteer. So I was in there many a times, eating dinner, eating lunch, eating breakfast like you. I didn't get any special treatment, any preferential treatment, nothing. And I've never yelled at any of those waiters or waitresses. So for people to say they were crying, I'm sorry. Somebody is misrepresenting the truth here, and I promise it is not myself. The safety meeting, I'm not sure where she's going with that. My understanding this entire time has always been about the investments, and we can talk about that in a minute. Employee interference, there have been no issues with employees. We've had several resign for issues due to behavior of residents and personal changes within their life, and we should respect that. One employee was released by HomeCo. I have been in the office more times than I want lately because I was assigned projects by the then-president, Marie. Projects were with IT, where I worked with Mike and then Brad, Election Buddy with Darlene, Brad, and Jennifer, and Key Access Management with Mike and then Brad. And it's important to remember, we have Arizona labor laws. If an employee had an issue, they should talk with their boss. That would either be HomeCo or the board president, who would organize a discussion. Instead... actually, it's called exhausting administrative remedies, and none of that happened. Instead, Mickey Ashton sat out in front of the receptionist's desk for over two months, daily, monitoring and listening to everything, making Stephanie and other staff uncomfortable. Darlene and Brad recognized it and complained to the board president. Lisa Day and Mickey met with Darlene one to two times a week for an hour at a time, asking the same questions over and over. Darlene complained about this and was told by Marie to just say no to any additional meetings because it was interfering with Darlene's duties. That's interfering with staff. I guess I can wait for the rest of my time. Thank you.
I'm gonna just continue with what I was trying to say before. As far as interference with volunteers and staff and/or individuals with Roberta, I guess I'll speak to her last statement. The people she was referencing, Lisa Day and Mickey Ashton, aren't employees or volunteers. They're not on the board. They were requesting those meetings to get information that can be requested by any resident. We have received reports from individuals regarding Roberta's interference with employees. Being in the office three times a week overseeing their duties, and that is not a duty of the board. That would be a duty of HomeCo or Staff Management of Happy Trails. We believe that the items I have outlined, as far as when I was kind of shut off on my five minutes earlier, the interference with the Safety Committee, and these are all items that we have either in writing or in direct conversation with people that have witnessed it all. She exceeded her role as a board liaison and tried to push a project that the committee did not agree with. As far as a rebuttal about the Welcome Back Parade, I guess I would say that being on the board and being on a committee hold two different things, because the board signs the Code of Conduct, and they are not to interfere with any other volunteers, as I read previously. It really created a risk, and the rest of the volunteers had to shift what they were doing just to mitigate the horses or whatever the situation was. As far as the finances, the investments of Happy Trails, we have been advised by legal counsel not to answer any direct questions related to that. The matter is still under investigation by several state and federal agencies, and all of it will come out later. Again, this all relates on our part to the Code of Conduct. Interference with volunteers willingly and knowingly misrepresenting facts, and the only, again, quoted text in the Code of Conduct is that a board member is limited exclusively to the vote upon policies and participation in meetings of the board. Period. That's what they sign. So again, these are facts that have been brought to our attention, either verbally or in writing. I believe many people that have brought these to us are in the audience today and will speak to it directly. We want you to be informed and make your own decision, and it's, again, it's unfortunate that we were here.
Thank you.
Yes, I say it is very unfortunate. It's also very expensive for association. So let's talk about that parade of 2023. That would have been in my previous term, which should not even have been brought up at this time, because I believe that was part of their Code of Conduct issue when they brought the first recall against me. The other factor is the safety project. Well, she didn't say which project it was I pushed, but the other factor is I haven't been the safety liaison this year. That was in the previous term, which was under the previous recall. So what I'm saying to you is they're bringing up past stuff to try and push into another recall. I have had many discussions with employees because I have been assigned projects, and when I have to be assigned a project with the board president giving me that assignment, and to be honest with you, the general manager giving me that assignment because I have the technical expertise, I'm working with those employees. Conversations happen back and forth, discussions. Not once was I yelling at them. Not once was I overriding them because the general manager was the employee supervisor or is the employee supervisor. So those conversations happened, then discussions happened with the general manager. Unless they have something specific that I can actually debate or rebut against, they don't have anything. This has been stirred up by some people that, for whatever reason, I'm sorry, I must be living in your head rent-free. That's all I can say. I'm sorry if you don't like me. I get it. Personalities do not always gel. But I have worked extremely hard for this association on this board and with this board and the previous board and with management. And decisions are made in a one-to-seven vote. It is not Roberta's show. Roberta has to work with the other six board members, and I do. And if you really sat down and asked the previous board members, you will find that Roberta has been the most compromising person in the sense that I do the most compromising on the decisions, so they get their way. So one in seven vote. That's it. And bringing up past things that were covered in a previous recall is unfair to all of you. And it's also unfair that they really didn't have documentation when they sent that petition around. And I'm saddened that you felt required to sign it, whether you were pressured, under duress, they're standing at your door, or they're giving you misinformation that you subjectively went ahead and followed. So I am saddened by that. But again, I will be available for all conversations, and I will willingly come up to me and talk to me. We're all adults here. You don't have to agree with me, but we should at least be able to discuss. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We'll open it up to questions from the floor now, and there'll be a... I think it's a two-minute time limit on the questions? Got it. Okay. Yeah, so here we go. Yes.
Is there one up there?
There's a microphone. I'm gonna turn this electric around because it's facing the wrong way. My name is Dave Pednary, and I've only got a couple... Nobody can hear me? My name is Dave Pednary. I've worked with Roberta on the annual veterans things as a flag bearer and helped her set up the Veterans Club. I've seen her skills at managing and planning and dealing with people, and I found her to be a joy to work with on so many occasions. I've got a brief letter I want to read from a lady who is not able to be here today. It's from Kathy Deegan, who's a member of the HT Quilt Club and the Veterans Club. My husband, Duke Deegan, and I have been residents at Happy Trails for 16 years. We came here because of the lifestyle and the friendliness of the community. However, the latter has been marred lately by the contentious issue of the attempted recall of one of our board members. Because I feel it grossly unjust to single out one board member with six others on the board, who surely were part of the decision-making process, I'm speaking out on behalf of Roberta Ernst. I'm a longtime personal friend of hers. I've served with her and will continue to do so on the highly successful Veterans Day event and the other projects that the quilting club has been involved with the veterans. She solicits ideas from others. She never pushed her agenda on us, although we wear neophytes in this arena compared to her. She knew what she had to do to achieve results. She suggested and implemented ideas that turned into actionable points, thus achieving the goal we all wanted to honor our veterans. In my opinion, she was masterful at prioritizing ideas, always getting feedback from our committee. She managed her part of the program magnificently and left the rest to us. She was strong, decisive, took charge, just what we needed, and we as a quilt committee saw value in such a person. I realize there are other issues in which I am not privy. I'm only speaking from my personal experience with Roberta and her willingness and dedication to work together with different groups. In addition, I will not join the effort to unfairly single out one board member here at Happy Trails. Again, this was Kathy Deegan of the Quilt Club.
Thank you. Next person?
I wanted to do one of the complaints that I had sent an email to HomeCo on July 12th... I wanted to do one of the complaints that I had sent an email to HomeCo on July 12 of 2024, and this is regarding the Fourth of July event that happened here. It was basically that she received gluten-free bread instead of a, Roberta, gluten-free bread. Oh, check RV Lot 354. And I observed it. I was sitting back in the corner. She went back to the kitchen. No meals were being served while she was back in the kitchen area and this kind of stuff. And when people left to come out and try to serve, they were visibly upset, and she tried to console, and one of them was so bad that her husband had to take her in the back and try to console with her. And it was all because she got gluten-free bread instead of a gluten-free bread, which was not offered to anybody else. So I do want to file a complaint that she filed that complaint, and she violated the interference with residents.
Do I get to respond?
Yes.
So I'm going to respond to that? I'm allowed to respond to it? Am I allowed to respond?
Yeah, no, there's two minutes for a comment, and then if either side wants to respond, you have two minutes to respond. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
That was the...
Yeah, yeah, you can respond as well.
So that was a dinner. That's correct. And I had already talked to Chef Peters. He always accommodates anyone here that has a gluten-free issue with a gluten-free bun or gluten-free bread. And I went back. I always check ahead of time just to make sure that they know that I'm here. And the waitress said, "I'm sorry, but there's no gluten-free bun." And I was actually talking to one of the employees for Chef Peters, and they said there isn't one. I said, "Are you sure?" Because he said he had them. So I said, "Okay." I walked back out here. It wasn't until a little bit later, I was actually, when they were delivering the meals, that they sent out a meal for my husband and I with both a gluten-free bun. Chef Peters actually texted me and said, "I'm sorry, there was miscommunications within my staff, my staff, about the gluten-free buns. They just didn't know where they were at." I told him, "No problem." I didn't have any other problems with the other volunteers. If there was, I would have apologized, but no one came to me and said there was a problem.
I guess this really isn't about gluten-free bread or gluten-free buns. We believe it's about the treatment of staff and employees, bringing them to the point of tears because of the yelling and asserting what we believe is her entitlement as a board member. That's what it was about. And as this gentleman spoke, there was an official complaint to management because of the treatment that was observed.
Marie Bechen, Lot 900. As most of you know, I was past president. As the past president, I can tell you firsthand, it was my job and my pleasure to talk to the staff, each and every one of them, starting with Mike Nice, all the way down to Darlene, to Jen, to Stephanie, to Dawn. And I can tell you from their lips to my ears that the reasons that some of them had issues and problems and stuff was residents. It was not board, not individually board, not the board in hand. Some of them have left on personal family issues, like Dawn and Stephanie or Sweet Stephanie, and some of them are leaving, as well as our communications committee are leaving because of the pressures and the stuff of this, of this. And it's gone going and ongoing and ongoing. Not only the pressures and all of this, but financially. I want you to think about this. The last recall cost $6,000. This is going to meet it. Between what we're paying Curtis at $400 an hour and all the phone calls and all this, and what we're paying for the vote, it's going to come up. So is all of this worth $12,000 between the two? No, no. And the reputation that this is causing in Facebook, because it's not just this resort, it gets out in the world. And someone here can tell you a story about sitting in an airport, listening to somebody who saw this in New Orleans and won't live here because of this. So think about this, folks.
Hi, my name is Michelle Stolz. I'm at Lot 444. I've had an ownership in Happy Trails here for 20 years now. I've seen a lot of things go on. I pretty much ignored them. However, when there was mention about these annuities at the election meetings, I started digging into it all by myself. I'm coming from investigation that I have done all by myself. And here's what I found. In August of 2022, Mr. Rubish commented in the Finance Committee meeting that he needed to find out what he could change in our accounts versus what the board had to approve. The next month, the annuities were purchased. Now, I've seen things posted on Facebook and sent around in emails that claim the board approved this. I would like to see proof of that. There was a board meeting in July. There was a board meeting in October. Nowhere was there ever a vote to approve the purchases of these annuities. Now, I've also seen presentations that say this was based on the 2020 investment policy. Well, in the 2020 investment policy, if you're even going to go against that policy, which has been admitted it was against the CCNRs to begin with, that policy states no single instrument may exceed $250,000. Now, I don't know how about your math goes, but in my math, $500,000 is more than 250, and it was done twice to buy these annuities. Now, I have two major concerns with what's in the annuities. Okay? I've also had people say, "Well, nobody else can touch this money except the board." Let me read to you a paragraph from the annuities. If you'd like to go reference these, it's on page 63 of the three-year annuity. It's on page 61 of the five-year annuity, at least the copy that I received when I requested copies of the annuities. The endorsement's part of your contract. The contract section from the general provisions in your base contract is...
So...
Somebody else give me my two minutes?
No.
If you want to get up and talk to it, you can.
So the investments. Knew that would come up. If I understood correctly, actually, I believe Blaine Rubish, my husband, actually asked what was the authority of the Investment Committee, and the Investment Committee was Barb Fugelberger, Becky, Becca Paulson, and Blaine Rubish. They were given the investment policy by Jill McGregor, which was written back in 2020 by Mike Rugland and Jeff Cousins, I believe. Yes, it does go against the CCNRs, but we didn't know it at the time. It was agreed upon. Investments were made based on the investment policy and later discovered by Blaine that they violated the CCNRs. So he notified Becca, who immediately notified Barb. All investments that were not FDIC were stopped. It was agreed upon by the board not to withdraw the investments due to penalties before maturity. But when the investment matured, it was moved into an FDIC investment. That is what has been happening. Each board comes into action with belief that the previous board did their due diligence with regard to writing policy. Yes, Blaine is listed as the annuitant for actual aerial tables. I can't say the word. I apologize. Only. It is against the law for a corporation or business to be on an annuity. The owner and the beneficiaries of the annuities is HTCA. The Investment Committee has no access to any of the HTCA funds. Now, the recall group only showed you the application where it showed him signing form. It also listed HTCA as the owner on that. They did not show you the declaration page, which states exactly what I said. As far as authority, I'm not sure where my two minutes are. Authority or authorization for the Investment Committee was done through an email circular. Becca would send the email around proposing the change. I'll wait.
Hello, I'm, am I close enough up here? Thank you. My name is Karen Stewart, Lot 1389. I'm going to be talking about my role as the Secretary in the Election Committee, and I will have to talk quickly for my two minutes. On March 6, the Election Committee had a meeting. Our new Board Liaison, Jennifer Ellsworth, was introduced to us. I thought she was competent, straightforward, a great addition to our committee. However, in that meeting, Jennifer made it clear that Happy Trails needed to move toward election voting, electronic voting. And the board, the committee agreed because our position was not no electronic voting. It's, so it's not if, it was when. When would it be appropriate to do that? And on April 11, at a board meeting, Jennifer made a motion that Happy Trails for that this season moved to electronic voting. On April, and I was informed, and it was during the summer season when most of our committee was not here, I was informed of that decision, and so I began, at the direction of my committee president and with the participation of Jennifer, to interview some of the possible election companies. In the end, there were two that seemed to be appropriate. One, Election Buddy, that was recommended by Roberta. The second one was HOA Vote Now. We had a meeting on April 24 with Election Buddy. I had many concerns about that company and including hidden costs for everything you would do. On May 6, and I'm happy to share my notes, April, May 16.
So I'm going to go back to the authorization real fast. I just want you to know that we just don't make this up. Becca sent out an email to the board members proposing an investment. The board members had up to 24 hours to respond. If there was no disagreements, then the Investment Committee went ahead with the investment due to the fact of the interest rate fluctuation. Arizona State Statute 10-3825, each committee of the board may exercise the authority of the board under Section 10-3801 to the extent specified by the board. In this case, it was an email approval, and this gave the Investment Committee authorization for the investments. With regard to the Election Committee, I did not fire them. I did not ask for them to be disbanded. In fact, I actually proposed five different electronic voting companies for them to review. It was proposed by a different member of the board to disband the Election Committee, and it was confirmed with the previous operations manager that that's probably a good idea because things weren't going exactly as some things were portrayed. I was actually working to see how they would fit in with the new program of electronic voting. Doesn't matter. It was put to the board, and it was voted on a six to one. The Election Committee serves at the purpose of the board like all other committees, and they did a fantastic job during the years that they were running the election. But times changed, and we went to an electronic voting system. And so therefore, as it was determined by the Board of Directors and management, they probably at that time were not a necessity to keep on. And I'll let you finish.
Thank you. I will go back and repeat that even under the 2020 policy, that investment did not follow the 2020 policy. I will continue on with my major concerns of today. In the annuity contracts, as I reference the pages, and I'm not going to repeat that to lose time, it says, "The contract section from the general provisions in your base contract is deleted and replaced by the following. This contract, including the contract data page, detached application, if any, and any attached endorsements, riders, or signed amendments constitute the entire contract. No one except the President or Secretary of the company may change or waive any of the terms of this contract." That is what the annuity says right now. President or secretary, one person. Who's our current president and who's our current secretary? I will lay that out there as a vulnerability to us right now. Second major concern. If Blaine drops dead today, what do you all think's going to happen tomorrow? We're going to file, we're going to get our money back in, you know, maybe a month after a death certificate gets presented? Let me read you another paragraph out of the annuities. This is on page 50 of both annuities. "If the deceased annuitant is an owner or any owner is a non-natural person, we will pay the death benefit within five years of the annuitant's death." I will read that again. "If the deceased annuitant is an owner or any owner is a non-natural person..." Happy Trails is the owner, a non-natural person. So the death benefit might have to wait five years to get that money back, according to these contracts. That is the vulnerability. If we don't have the money we need, we may have to have special assessments. We may have to go get loans. We may have to defer necessary, all of our necessary maintenance. So I have major concerns. I hope you do too, because it's your money and your money and your money and your money of those of you listening online.
It's everybody's money, and now I feel like I need to hire a bodyguard for my husband. So the fact of the matter is, should anything happen, HTCA will get the money, and there's not a five-year, there is not a five-year hold on that. And you can ask Darlene, I think she can testify, that no one can go in there and get those funds. It can only be HTCA. No, it's not. I can't either because I'm not on the account at LPL with the annuities. So HTCA is the owner. They're the ones that can change things, and they may actually be able to change the annuitant. If you need to put someone else's name on it, that's fine. You pick who wants to be on the annuity as the annuitant. Who wants to? Want Lisa Day? You want Mickey? You want any of them? Who wants to put their head on that one? You have your money. And oh, by the way, you've lost no money. You've actually increased your funds with the interest rates. So there you go. There is no risk. Okay.
Continuing, on May 16, we had the Election Committee, including our Board of Directors Liaison Jennifer, interviewed Vote HOA Now. They were the best company by far. They actually are a US-based company. They have staff in Gilbert. They do a lot of elections in Arizona. They know Arizona laws. Their prices were clear. There wasn't a bunch of things that were all added. Better quality. Our ballots could have pictures, bios, you can click. We could have even put our announcement for our annual meeting because there was no limit to the size of information you could have available. If you had a second election in a single year, there was a huge discount because you had already built your database. That was important because it was believed it was going to take longer than September to have quality CCNR changes. This would allow us to do the Board of Directors electronically and the CCNR changes cost-effectively. You could have custom emails so you knew that this Ask to Vote came from Happy Trails. June 5, we made our recommendation to the board as the Election Committee. At the board meeting on June 6, Roberta challenged our decision and insisted on having another meeting with Election Buddy. Not with Vote HOA Now, only Election Buddy. June 20, in the meeting with Election Buddy, when I attempted to bring up concerns, I was remote. We were having a problem with the communication system, and I challenged Election Buddy in their statements because there were changes from the first meeting to the second meeting. Roberta said, and it's not a quote, but essentially, "Let's work on that. Let's work on that." Then the person making the...
So unfortunately, Marie left, but the fact is, we met with both Vote HOA Now and Election Buddy. Marie had additional questions, so she met with them as well. There were, you all know, depending on how you ask the question and if you ask the right question, what kind of answer you might get. I am IT qualified, so I was helping to straighten out some discussions. The cost for one versus the other was definitely different. Even though one may have given a discount on the second vote, it still added up to be more than what it would have been with the other company. Doesn't matter. It went for a vote to the board. I was one vote of seven. Marie had additional questions, so she met with them as well. There were, you all know, depending on how you ask the question, and if you ask the right question, what kind of answer you might get. I am IT qualified, so I was helping to straighten out some discussions. The cost for one versus the other was definitely different. Even though one may have given a discount on the second vote, it still added up to be more than what it would have been with the other company. Doesn't matter. It went for a vote to the board. I was one vote of seven.
Also, just in the interest of fairness, I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak before people start speaking again.
Jackie Adamson, Lot 528. Maybe I'm showing my ignorance, but I haven't still understood that Roberta was a board member when this annuity with Blaine's name on it happened.
Yes, I was.
Along with six other board members.
I don't have a question, I have a statement. Number one, if Roberta is assertive, that's being assertive. Assumptions and assertiveness have two different meanings. This side is assuming an awful lot. Roberta's just being assertive to protect her integrity. You want your money back from this annuity? We made $150,000. What about what it's costing us today? That's where we should be concerned. Wake up. We're a community.
Philip Miller, Lot 554. I'm a new resident, uh, Philip Miller, Lot 554. I'm a new resident in Happy Trails. Been here since just shortly after the first year. Mine is a point of order. It's my understanding that this would should be a question time to the appealing and to the respondent to the recall. And I would ask the moderator to please not let either one of these people speak out of turn and bring order to this meeting. I've attended other board meetings where this is a time for public meeting. After I say my comment, the most I should get out of the chair is a thank you. It's a time for people to listen. It's not a time for me to poll the audience on what they think of my thoughts. So I'd ask you to acknowledge each one of the speakers with their time, and if the appealing for the recall has more reasons, but we, we have heard a lot of testimony and comments about things that have not been discussed by the appealing in the recall. Thank you.
I will yield to anyone else who wants to talk, and I apologize to give you credible detail and to give Roberta credible detail to respond. It does take time. In the June 20th meeting with Election Buddy, in addition to say, "Let's work on that to any issue that was brought up," the Election Buddy representative said, "After three years of working with you, Roberta, this is great. We're going to be doing Happy Trails elections." That was not a meeting to continue to interview companies. A pre-decision had been made by Roberta Ernst that we would use Election Buddy. I submit that they were not the best choice. I do understand the board gets to choose and vote, but it was complete disrespect for the time and effort as volunteers I and my other fellow members put into researching the best company. And Election Buddy, in my estimation, was not the best company. I have addition issues to do with the election ballots, that no board shall willingly and knowingly misrepresent facts to the owners of the community for any reason. I believe that many of the statements in the ballots, and my understanding is Roberta was the primary typer and crafter with help on the different ballot measures. One of them was about allowing guns in the community to be displayed, and it was said in that that this strengthened our control of guns being displayed. That was not accurate. Our current CCNR said that guns cannot be displayed on the complete property, 100% of Happy Trails. So any statement naming a few buildings actually weakened the places in which it's...
So the only change that that had involved, and again, I'm sorry, it was misrepresented because I don't think you understood it completely, was not to display them out. It was so that when people were in the building, such as the Firearms Enthusiast Club, they could get permission from the board to be able to display their weapons or whatever for presentations and that in the common area buildings. That's what that was about. You're right, the current CCNR says you cannot display weapons anywhere on HTCA property, which means on your own personal deeded lot, I don't know, if somebody's showing his other buddy he just bought a new hunting rifle, technically, he cannot bring it outside on his patio and show it to his buddy. It has to be done inside their house. Okay? That's the current rule. So think of that. But the rule was, or the change was to allow so that if the Firearms Enthusiast Club wanted to come to club fair, they could bring one of their weapons in and use it as a demo with authorization by the board, permission. That was the intent of that.
I would just like to go back to where we started, where I started speaking on behalf of this recall. There's been a lot of talk about committees and volunteers and Roberta's involvement. I don't know, maybe it means that the code of conduct needs to be rewritten, because currently it does say, and I quote, "No board member shall interfere with the duties of any Happy Trails volunteers." The volunteers include those that are on committees and organizing events. So I know we all heard Roberta say that, as we, as I was talking about the parade, that she was on the committee. Well, maybe a board member should not be on a committee also, because it's in conflict of what they sign with the code of conduct.
Mickey Aston, Lot 13, 40-year owner. Roberta, will you please repeat what you said about me sitting in the office?
Yes, you were sitting in front of the administrative desk roughly five days a week for at least over a month. I thought it was two months. That's what I've also heard from Stephanie and from several others in the staff, and Darlene and Brad.
What time period? What month are we talking?
Just in the last two months.
Okay. Since October, I have attended almost every single committee meeting. Thank you. I do stop in the office. Stephanie was a wonderful person. I got to know her. I knew Mike Nize. I knew Jennifer Eastman, who was our IT person. I had a rapport with her based on my IT background. I know Darlene. I know Bradley. And if either one of them have an issue with me passing through the office, I do not sit in the lobby. There's a puzzle in there, but I don't even sit and do the puzzle. I do not sit in that lobby. I say hi to everybody. I know everybody. I will not betray the friendship and the trust those employees put in me with the details they have told me. There are always three sides to a story. Their side, my side, and the truth. And I will not betray what those employees have told me about working here. I can't imagine my husband would let me be away from the house that many days, other than to attend the committee meetings. So committees are run by volunteers. I know I'm going to get timed out, Dave. Committees are run by volunteers. The board liaison, is that me already? The board liaison is not supposed to control the committees. I will be back.
Okay, Donna Wisdom, Lot 379. First, I want everybody to understand that this recall, some of the things they're saying about the recall are based on the last recall. Should have never been brought up. So as far as I'm concerned, they have nothing. Second, we were all told that we would see the check that Blaine got for payment for these annuities, which they have not produced, which they will not produce because there isn't one. Second, if anybody wants to know about the story about the New Orleans person sitting in the airport waiting to come back to Phoenix, come see me. I'm that person. And it was very embarrassing.
Marla Festinie, Lot 2323. Hold it up farther. Okay. The, the previous recall, I actually signed. I wasn't here very long. I was running for the board, and I apologized to Roberta because I'm telling you, the whole pickleball club, the gun club, which what is, what it was called at that time, were so mad at me because I wanted to sign, because I wanted to get her out. Now I see that they're voting for her to get out. Now, as far as Mickey, Mickey, I like you very much, but you were in the office and you were just standing up against the books when I went in to talk to Stephanie, about my, my personal thing, because I was trying to rent a lot. But you came over, you came over to me and were trying to explain it to not only me, but to Stephanie, and I had it under control. So I do not appreciate that. I like you very much, you're very, whatever. As far as, as far as Roberta, it does seem like everybody does have it out for her, because there are other members on that board, which I had issues with, okay, which is why I ran. Wasn't Roberta. From what I understand, there was another board president that actually okayed everything back in 2020, in which she was not. I'm not up here to protect her. I'm up here because I just, the saying keeps on going on and on and on. And I am also in the gun club, not the gun enthusiast or whatever it wants to be called, firearms. So I am also a gun-carrying concealed weapon person. I don't wear it. And if I want to go to the gun club and I want to show something, I will do it.
Mickey Aston, Lot 13. I'm going to come back to the code of conduct. I also wonder why this came back centered on me. I have not been posting things on Facebook. I've not, no, no, no. Not negative things, not negative. I'm the, okay. Like I said, two sides to every story, but I have tried to respect those two Facebook groups. Let's just put it that way. Committees are run by volunteers. There's a board liaison, and there's a, could be a board member. On November 19th, 2024 communications meeting, I asked the chairperson of the communications meeting, her name was Sue, if Darlene could continue introducing key staff members at her town hall meeting. Sue said yes, she would talk to Darlene. Roberta looked at me and said, "No, it's not going to happen." Roberta said, "Residents can go find information on Neighbor and Engage." I said, "It's not correct, and it's not up to date." She said, "I can lead horses to water, but if the horses don't want to drink, I still have a bunch of old thirsty horses." I was shocked that she said "old," referring to all of us. But she said, "No, not going to happen." I went to Darlene. I said, "Darlene, can you produce the key members on your staff at the town hall meeting?" And she has done that. So I also would like to say to Darlene and Bradley, please find me and tell me that you want me to cut back on my time in the office. I'd be happy to. I don't walk in, I make an appointment. On 12/18/24, a meeting with Roberta, talking, it was a public meeting, it is recorded, 12/18/24, she was talking about the HT compliance employee who was injured in a golf cart crash. The management was not talking about that accident. It's a HIPAA issue. She was talking about it publicly. In fact, she called another resident who called me. It is not hearsay, it happened.
I just have a couple of concerns here. I'm going to read you paragraph 3.16 of CCNRs. Funds of the association from any source other than small amounts or petty cash or similar purposes shall be kept in deposit in federally insured financial institutions in fully insured accounts. Is there any question as to what that means? Particularly you, Roberta, because you're on the finance, we're on the finance committee.
I've never been on the finance committee. No, sir, I'm not on the finance committee.
You're not now? You weren't before?
I was not on the finance committee before, sir.
What is your last name?
Roberta Ernest. If you're talking about Becca Paulson, she was our treasurer. She was on the finance committee.
And have you ever been to any of the financial meetings?
I go to their meetings periodically, yes, as a board member.
Would you be aware of what some of the financial rules are?
We are.
Is your husband aware of the rules?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So my point is, after reading this, is you, whoever invested the funds, and if it's the board, then the whole board should be resigned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not just you, but the whole board. And so to say, "Oh, it's okay to keep on one board member and not to get rid of the rest," is probably not the right way to approach it. But let's get rid of all of them then. Right? Did they all break the law? Did they, did they do what you asked them to do? No, they did not. So I would say that I have a lack of confidence in your decisions for us. And it's not personal, it's the fact that we have millions, nine million dollars. I get a financial report and it has, it has five lines. Fine, sir. Fine, thank you.
Mickey, would you touch on the code of conduct one time, dealing with volunteers?
The, the statement on the code of conduct for volunteers? It's a one-sentence statement in the code of conduct that says, "No," and this is a quote, it's taken right from their signed code of conduct for each board member, "No board member shall interfere with the duties of any Happy Trails volunteer." Period, unquote.
Mickey Aston, again, Lot 13. The responsibility of a board member is to vote on issues and meetings. It's not to run management, it's not to control staff. I do go to almost all the committee meetings, and, and there's two issues here in my head. Code of Conduct having to do with mismanagement of staff and volunteers and mismanagement of our funds. So for me, there's two issues. Violation of the open meeting law at the Budget Committee. On January 29th, I walked in, they were starting the meeting. I said, "We have a quorum of four board members present." The chair of the committee said, "Sit down, we're not going to talk about it." I looked at Roberta, she said, "We're not doing any business here." Four members cannot be in the same room together. They were doing business. It was a budget finance committee meeting. Eventually, Marie left, leaving Roberta, Becca, Cindy in the room to finish out the meeting. On the 2/18 Annual Business Meeting, that just happened recently, myself and another person heard Roberta talking about a fellow board member. She is my next-door neighbor. She does have cancer, but Roberta was telling people she had stage IV cancer. She does not. And I think it's inappropriate. It's a violation of confidentiality to talk about another board member and also the Happy Trails compliance employee who was in that horrible crash. And she talked publicly about both of those. I did go to management when both of those things happened. I usually go to management when something strikes me wrong. The investment policy, there's three things in that investment policy from 2020. This is prior to 2022 September, when those annuities were purchased. All monies must be invested in compliance with the association's governing documents. That's in that low-level policy. It says you have to follow this policy up here, this CCNRs. I see it, Dave. Well, first of all, I think Curtis could stand right here and tell you, the open meeting forum that you talked about was not true. Actually, we can go into committees and sit. It's an open meeting. It's open to everyone, even if there's a quorum, because the four board members that were in there were listening to the Budget Committee, Finance Committee, and listening to them and asking questions and getting clarity. That's how we stay informed as a board. So that was not a violation of the open meeting statute, and he can confirm...
So that was not a violation of the open meeting statute, and he can confirm that because Marie called him on it. Also, the suitable authorized investments that are listed right here in your investment policy, talk about commercial paper investments, they're not FDIC. Corporate bonds, they're not FDIC. Municipal securities, they're not FDIC. Treasurers, you get the point. It doesn't matter. The investment portfolio or the investment policy violated the CCNRs. There was a mistake made, the board admitted it, and they worked to correct it without causing any loss in funds due to lack of maturity of those investments. Things have been moved. No, I didn't boast to people about other people's health issues. If I talked to another board member, it was because they already knew it and we were talking about it. But we do not blast out that information. So I'm sorry, I'm not sure where you're getting that information or why you're dispelling it that way, but unfortunately, some of the things I've seen you and the other group propel on Facebook have not been 100% truthful. Curtis, do you want to verify the open meeting thing?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you the open meeting thing at another time, but I do notice that we're at 11:42, we only have a couple of minutes left. Is there anybody in the interest of fairness who hasn't spoken yet on either side, doesn't matter to me, who wants to speak? If not, what I'd like to do is, I mean, we've got, I'd like to, oh, some guy's getting up who hasn't spoken before. So I'm going to turn the floor over to him real quick. Let him say his two minutes.
Steve Funk, lot 1282. I've listened to all of this and I just have to make a statement to the community here. This kind of stuff is tearing our community apart. It's making us wonder if we even want to live here. We have people complaining. Thank you. We have complaining about whether or not a person had gluten-free bread. That's ridiculous. One thing, one thing about the annuities, that seems to me that it's the biggest issue that we're talking about here today. And the Board of Directors at the time in 2022, when those annuities were bought, there are only two people left on the Board of Directors today that were on the Board of Directors then. Roberta right here and Marilyn Sorenson. Marilyn Sorenson, bless her heart, I am saddened that her health is in the shape that it is. I feel for her, we all feel for her. However, how does this community hold her accountable, Roberta, and not Marilyn Sorenson? Because she was one of the board directors that also signed for the approval to purchase these annuities. What is fair is fair. People, be smart, be fair. The other thing that's happening in this community is, last election, Roberta received more votes than any other candidate on the ballot sheet after the recall. These people trying to take her out now are taking my vote away from me. They are taking your vote away from you. If you want to allow that to happen today, it's going to happen again in the future. Thank you very much. And by the way, one last thing. I get amped up about these things. I'm emotional.
Mic alive?
Dave Owens, lot 533. I've been in Happy Trails since 2009. Okay, can you hear me now? All right. There's a problem here that I don't think we're looking at things correctly. The finance committee and the board of directors made a mistake. They invested in things that were not FDIC guaranteed. They have taken steps to correct that. They actually have not cost HTCA a dime. Nobody has lost any money. There is no problem here. These will age out as they're supposed to and then get invested in FDIC-approved documents. Why are we doing this? In basketball, there's a rule, no harm, no foul. There is no harm here and there is no foul.
My name is Yvette Hollis, lot 353. I keep hearing all of this is a financial part with Roberta. However, I would like to add that there have been times that I have witnessed issues with her board position to do things that I feel were in violation of a code of conduct or ethics violation, where I feel she has used her position to gain personally. She's been bullying and intimidating others her way. You guys say bullshit on the bread? I can tell you I was here for that. She stormed into the kitchen. You wouldn't do that at a regular restaurant, why is it okay here? I witnessed that twice. At the reopening of the chuck wagon, I witnessed it again. She uses her power and what she does to get things earlier. So what? How does that look to the rest of us sitting here that have ordered food and we have to wait? She gets it first. Now how can that be when it was a reopening to the chuck wagon? There was four other tables in front of her. She went back, she left, she came back. I said to her, how does that work? How do you get served before the other four tables in front of you? You know what her response was? I pre-ordered. That's BS, that's how it looks. It looks to the others at our table, wow, she got her food first. That's a violation and a code of conduct issue.
Okay. I appreciate that. I've just been, I've just reminded, we're actually three minutes over. So, what I'd like to do is give each side two minutes, two minutes for you, two minutes for you to finish this up and conclude, in fairness.
I guess I'd just like to go back to the beginning. And you've heard stories, you've heard Yvette, you've heard personal experiences. People have asked why we're singling out Roberta. For us, it's about the code of conduct. And we have no proof of violations of code of conduct from anyone else. We have personal stories, recollections of what has happened in committees, volunteer organization events. And again, as I've stated a few times now, that their code of conduct that each of them sign says, "No board member shall interfere with the duties of Happy Trails," let alone visibly upsetting them, bringing them to the point of tears. That's not what we want for this resort. We want respect for each other, we want following their own code of conduct. And if we allow it to continue to happen, that's where the problem is because it will just drive it down. If there's a code of conduct, just like any other code of conduct in an employer or the government or an agency, they're expected to adhere to that code of conduct or be out.
I served in the Air Force 36 years. I have a tendency to walk with a purpose. So when you see me walk, I walk with a purpose. I have a heel beat, I can't get rid of it, it's just the way it is. I stand tall and I stand strong because I've had to deal unfortunately with the opposite sex that were taller than me. So yeah, I can be somewhat aggressive at times. I have never brought anyone to tears. If I had, I would have been the first one to apologize because that is never an intention. And I am deliberately careful when I'm talking with people that I feel might be a little more capable of being hurt. I have seen other people here, and you're shaking your head, walk in and take charge of things too, and yet it was none of my business, I didn't bring it up. As far as food being served to me first, you want to know what actually happened? The four of us sat down, we ordered our food when we ordered our drinks, whereas the other tables ordered their drinks first and then their food. We ordered the fish fry, we got our fish fry first before they got their other stuff. That's how that happened. You can ask, you can ask the chef, he'll tell you. Because he came to me the next day and said, some people complained, but it really wasn't anything other than you ordered what the special was, you ordered it when your drinks were on. That's how it happened, it happens that way in restaurants. It wasn't preferential treatment. I'm sorry you felt that way, that's not what it was. I have not interfered with others. And also, state statute says that the Board of Directors actually runs the association. Management is hired in to manage the day-to-day operations. So yes, if your board members, typically the president and vice president, I'm now the secretary, so I won't be in the office anymore, the president and the vice president manage those things. And they are constantly in contact with the management company. Otherwise, why even have a board? Just let the management company run it all. That is a fact.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for participating in your community. I hope everyone has a great day. God bless.